...our regular board of eight students, the October 24th, 2017. At this time, we'll have a meeting to order. We'll have an invocation by our own representative, Jerry Dean.
If you'll bow your heads, please. Heavenly Father, we come to thee tonight to bow out your love and ask him that you will lay your hand on our hearts or our minds, that you will give us the wisdom to do the things that are good and righteous and nice-minded, that you will help us to help the children of our communities and their parents, that you will guide us in all things. And we pray for your continued guidance and wisdom. And we pray all this in thy son's most holy name. I'm in.
Thank you. Thank you, Jerry. At this time, we'll have a pleasantries to the flag led by the Lanier School ROTC.
Come, guard, hauk, live, face, present, comes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. March time, march. Come, guard, hauk, order, come, forth, order.
Thank you. Thank you, Lanier ROTC. We do have a corner in place with seven members in attendance. May the motion at this time approve the agenda.
As we move on to the second, as we approve the agenda as planned, is there any discussion? Those who hold a signature on that, it is unanimous. First, I am on the agenda as recognition by Mr. Thomas Salter.
Good evening. Thank you so much. First, we want to recognize our fine Lanier ROTC students. We have Maya Williams, Ashley Shavers, Jasmine Lewis, and Vanessa Smith, and they do a fantastic job putting together a wonderful. Thank you. At this time, would Jody Baston please come forward? And I hope I'm saying that correctly. Here, Jody. Up here. We'd like to start our recognitions tonight with an inspiring story about how people opened their hearts and quickly mobilized their efforts to help in a time of crisis. When Hurricane Harvey hit Texas, MPS social worker Jody Baston. Am I close? Close enough, okay.
Madison.
Uh, Madison, thank you. Had a glimmer of an idea that made maybe the special education department could help in some way. Ms. Madison's own words sparked the idea, exploded into a wonderful outpouring of support and generosity. A list of requested items for both people and pets was circulated throughout the special education department into all the school-based special education staff. The response was overwhelming to the point that Ms. Madison in her garage turned into a warehouse. It was around that same time that Hurricane Irma was buried down on South Florida, and people continued to show up with fresh supplies. Knowing there was still a need for those supplies, she contacted the Queen's of Palm Beach, Florida to figure out a way to make it happen. On October 2nd, Ms. Madison took the second load of supplies to Florida after she first took two trucks and trailers worth of supplies to Covington, Louisiana, and from there, another organization took the items on to Texas. Those supplies ended up helping victims of another hurricane because the rapid response to Irma was so great, on October 9th, supplies were also loaded into cargo planes headed for Puerto Rico, which had been hammered by Hurricane Maria. Ms. Madison gives credit to all the people who donated to this effort, and I think you'll agree she deserves special recognition. Please join the board in applauding her efforts. I'd also like to recognize Katrina Johnson, who's the head of Special Education, who has been with the staff. Thank you so much. We'd also like to recognize some young journalists who've made a splash for their good work recently, the staff of Cindy Lanier's Blue and White. Are they here? Led by teacher Ken Spear, the Blue and White staff, as for the second year in a row, won the Hallmark Award at Troy University J-Day Media Workshop and Competition. In addition to the Hallmark Award, they also won for Best Writing Quality, Best Newspaper Coverage, and Best Layout and Design. This is out of more than 500 students from 27 public and private schools that took part in J-Day. That's quite an accomplishment. Uh, Ken, would you mind introducing your staff there, please, sir?
Sure. Start them again. Um, these are my seniors, uh, oh my God. So many of them. Yeah, this is Mr. Gibson. I always call him Mr. Bass. Uh, this is Mr. Andre Lamont, Jamila Parker, Leandre Phelps, and Michaela Paris.
We're very lucky to have Mr. Spear and his experience as a news. He was the, actually, when I first got here, Ken was the education reporter for Montgomery Advertiser. And so, our kids are very fortunate to be learning from someone who has actually done the job, not just learned how to do the job. So let's give them all a great welcome. Thank you so much. Thanks, guys. Good work. Tonight, we also continue our recognition of our outstanding MPS employees. We have both a certified and a classified staff member who are excellent examples of the professionals that work in our schools. Would Tamara Card and Nicole Huffman please come forward? Tamara Card has been a teacher for 18 years. She received her undergraduate degree from AU-EB and her master's from Troy University's Montgomery Campus. In her nomination, Flowers Elementary Principal Ethel Barnes, and I believe Ms. Barnes is here tonight, wrote, "Mrs. Card's enthusiasm for teaching is contagious. She demonstrates exceptional teaching ability every day. She plans wonderful lessons, keeping in mind the different learning styles of her students in her classroom. She possesses excessive, or extensive, I'm sorry, knowledge in her area. I don't think it could be excessive, could it? She extends teaching outside the classroom in unique ways. Mrs. Card is a dedicated, caring, and involved individual. She offers genuine, positive, and rewarding experiences for her students. She has that special personality that makes every child's school life joyous. She serves as a beautiful role model and an instrument of inspiration for her students." We're also pleased to honor security guard Nicole Huffman, who worked with students at Park Crossing High School. Director of Security Bobby Crew says to Ms. Huffman that she arrives early each day to ensure that students, buses, and parents dropping off students arrive in Park safely. She works closely with the school administrators, staff, and law enforcement to ensure a safe environment at Park Crossing during the school day. She spends many hours each week in extracurricular events to make sure the campus is safe. She's professional in her demeanor and appearance and sets an excellent example for the students and her coworkers. She works hard every day and is constantly seeking ways to make the school safer. The safety of students, staff, and visitors is her passion. Ms. Huffman was hired by the Security Department in 2009 and has worked two years at Lanier, two years at the Key, and then Park Crossing since it opened. As a small token of our appreciation, both of our employees of the month received a certificate and a $25 gift card. A $25 Target gift card from the Red folks at Baptist Hospital. They also have an article about them published in the Montgomery Advertiser thanks to Bo Grift and the sponsorship of the advertiser. Please join the board in recognizing Ms. Card and Officer Huffman for their outstanding contributions to the children of Montgomery.
Father of the fire, receive as affirmation, A F Y 2016 Audit Message to Teresa Dickson.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Teresa Dickson, and I'm with the examiners, help of accounts. Maya had with me Dixie Broadwater and personally, the other people that performed the audit, as we do every fiscal year. We do this in accordance with the School Physical Accountability Act, so tonight, we're here to present fiscal year 16 audit report.
Excuse me, I don't mean to cut in, but don't we usually get a copy?
You should have received that in the email. We conducted our audit in accordance with applicable accounting requirements, which include the generally accepted accounting principles, generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards, and uniform guidance. We issued an unnotified opinion on the board's financial statements as of for the period ending September 30th, 2016. This means that the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We also noted no matters to indicate that the board had not complied in all material respects with the applicable laws and regulations. We did, however, note the following matters and have included them as audit findings. It's not we're going to summarize those for time, but a detailed copy of our audit report can be found at wwwexaminers.alabama spelled out dot gov. The findings are listed in a numbered sequence. The fiscal year 16 would indicate the current year finding, and then if you see a finding that's say 2011, that's how long that finding's been standing. The first finding is 2016 dash one. It relates to the purchases being made prior to a purchase order being approved at the following schools: Brubaker Middle School, Brubaker Primary School, and TS Morris Elementary School. Finding number 2016 dash two. At Brubaker Middle School, the school failed to prepare and retain a ticket sales report form for paid admission to any event during fiscal year. Also, the school failed to maintain an inventory of tickets issued and used. Finding number 2016 dash three. The board failed to make available classroom instructional supply funds to teachers before this fiscal first, as provided for by state laws. These funds were not made available until January 4th, 2016. Finding number 2016 dash four. The board's general fund bank account contains funds that are legally restricted by state legislature and bond covenants. During the audit period, the board used restricted funds to pay payroll and other general expenditures of the board. Finding number 2016 dash five. The board approved a resolution on February 28th, 2012, which allowed board members and certain key employees of the board to use a purchase card. The board had $62,391.92 of expenditures that were not adequately documented according to board's policy during the audit period. Finding number 2016 dash six. The board failed to properly advertise for bids for the renovation of the Impact Building. The board should have advertised for bids in three newspapers in general circulation throughout the state, but only advertised for bids in one newspaper in general circulation in the state for three weeks. Finding number 2016 dash seven. The board failed to reconcile the central office bank accounts in a timely manner. The September 30th, 2016 bank accounts were not reconciled until March and April of 2017. Also, the board had reconciled items in the general fund bank account, which included amounts due from the accounts payable, payroll, and federal programs bank accounts that are not transferred until May 19th, 2017, and May 22nd, 2017. Approximately 3.4 million was still not transferred at the end of our field work. Finding number 2016 dash eight. The board failed to properly record all accounts receivables in the amount of $302,704.85 and accounts payable in the amount of $493,794.67 at year-end as required by GAAP. Finding number 2016 dash nine. The board failed to record $5.9 million in inter fund receivables and payables at year-end. The board was notified of this material statement and accordingly made these journal entries. As of August 8th, 2017, the board had not yet repaid these amounts. These are unresolved prior audit findings. Finding number 2015 dash one. The board failed to issue 1099 forms to three individuals who provided services of $600 on board Brubaker Middle School as required by the IRS regulations. Finding number 2015 dash three. The board has failed to perform an annual inventory of capital assets for the 2014, 2015, or 2016 fiscal years, and therefore is a violation of its own board's policy. Finding 2011 dash three. Adequate support documentation was not always retained for all disbursements of funds at Brubaker Middle School. Finding number 2009 dash one. At Brubaker Middle, TS Morris Elementary, and Highland Avenue Schools, some teachers failed to remit money collected to the billkeeper in a timely manner. For the fiscal year 2016, the board's major federal financial assistance programs tested were the Title II Program, Special Education Program, and the Improvement Teacher Quality Program. We issued unnotified opinions on these major funds tested. We did, however, note the following matter and have included it as an audit finding. It summarized as follows. Finding number 2016 dash one. The board failed to provide certifications of time and effort reports for salaries and benefits paid to four employees paid from special education funds. We have included recommendations in our audit report to correct these findings. The superintendent has prepared a corrective action plan and is included in our audit as Exhibit 17. Our audit was released to the public on our website on October 13th, 2017, and a copy can be downloaded or viewed at wwwexaminers.alabama spelled out dot gov.
Would you repeat the part that you have on the certification?
For the Special Education Fund?
Yes, ma'am.
Every year, federal law requires us to test time and effort reports. There are certain regulations that are required for any employee that spends time in a special education program. What we did was we sampled across the board, all employees that are paid for special ed teachers, and found that four of those employees did not have those required.
Dixie, you've been doing this audit for years now, and you were talking about 60, over $62,000 charged to our board for not having receipts or whatever. Well, we started in 2012 with the credit card. Most of that was done with hotel bills or flights or whatever. And I would think that since you've been doing the audit, you waited until this year to compile that. I just need to know that because personally, my only time when I charged on the card was for hotel bills. I don't even turn any vouchers or anything like that because I pay for it myself as stewardship. So I can't see us as a board with seven people doing $62,000 worth of anything that you pay to account for.
Yes, ma'am. As far as what happened was, I think with the change in administration, there was a small percentage of hotel and travel registration. During that time, approximately $47,000 had begun to be used with that purchase card for utilities. So I think what happened was they had set up an all-night pay, lucky with your own personal utility deal, and no documentation was kept for that. So we could not prove whether that was an employee's utility deal versus the school's utility deal because that's a relative.
Well, I don't know. I don't know.
The thing about that, I think every card carries a number that tends to distinguish one card from another because of the different accounts in those cards. Now, certainly, it could have been easily done or rectified with respect to the bank reconciling each of those cards in terms of what the expenditures were, each card, and what those expenditures were, because they do keep a record on all purchases for each card.
And we did.
And the other thing with that is this. It is my understanding, and that was even questioned, and they were calling around asking us, could we find any of our receipts? Well, there were only one or two receipts missing, so they should have had some receipts to account for expenditures that were, and if you all recall, I said, well, they couldn't find them due to a change in the CSFO office, and they couldn't find the receipts. Those receipts were turned in. This time, we do a trip along with the agenda for the different activities or the conferences that we attended. So you should have been able to find some, and if you didn't find any, whatever you found should have been subtracted from whatever that total is.
It's for sure none of these board members paid their utility bills. Somebody needs to find something.
Now, I believe the bank can give you the information because every card carries a number and tells what you charged on that card.
And we all had some.
So that wouldn't be a hard thing to fix, huh?
Excuse me, I just have one quick question. When you say the board, you're not talking, are you talking about the seven board members or just MPS, the school system?
It was board members and certain key employees of the board according to your resolution.
And what key employees? Who do you classify as key employees?
You classified the key employees when you passed that resolution. Dixie, can you tell me who else was involved?
The only other person who had a card, there was a card issued to the board members that were on the board during the fiscal year 16. There was also one issued to the chief academic officer, I believe it was Dr. Blair, and there was also a card. There was also a card that was issued to the university. It's like Montgomery County Board of Education. It did not have a specific name on it. It says Montgomery County Board of Education, and it was used, to my understanding, in-house to pay things like utility bills, to book hotels for you guys, and things like that. So there was a card issued to every board member, nearly everybody that was still actually used during fiscal year, besides the board members, the chief academic officer at the times, and then there was the one that's been used in-house.
Okay, but then now, the problem with you relating group of hotels, plus I understand that, but not the chief academic officer, that shouldn't have been charged. Especially with utility bills.
Are you talking about electric, gas, and things like that? Well, that's something personal. I think we need to go ahead and do that because they misuse public funds. Can you identify the one?
We asked for documentation to be required from the utility company. We exercised all avenues that we could from our standpoint. We asked for documentation to be provided by the staff of MPS to support those utility deals, and they was not provided to.
Do you think that it was a part that was compromised and somebody used it?
It was the car that was used for that was the in-house part of the special plan.
Well, who controls the in-house?
That is.
Who has the in-house?
What did she do? She backed it up.
Who has? Who has?
It was in finance. I like to address the issue of the charges on the credit card. Once the charges are made, I can log into the bank account, and that card is connected to our bank account, and it tells me every charge, where it is, what's it for. We then tried to call. The utilities were automatically set up by our previous CSFO, and one is Dixie Electric. They will cut it off regardless if it's a school in the daytime with the children. So in order to get those deals paid on time and expedited, the previous CSFO had that set up, so it was automatic draft, then we would reconcile it to the bank account. So when I did call the utility company trying to back up, I was told that that data could not, you know, be reproduced, I guess, after so long it was lost. And so, we tried to recover as much as we could, pulled it off the bank account, explained it to the examiners, and you still must have those receipts to back up, and I was unable to find those itemized bills. But Dixie Electric and the other companies out of there did verify the deal was paid, so it was not used on a personal basis, but it was used for the board's utilities. And there were some travel done that the board members stated that they did turn their receipts in, wherever, you know, I don't know whether the previous CSFO kept that information, but we looked everywhere that we could, and we could not find them. So my suggestion to them was to next time, take pictures with your phone or make a copy. And so, I'm sorry, but the majority is the utilities. The majority of it was utilities that was charged.
Well, that was how, what I was going to do that.
Okay, and Dixon, that was over a period of time.
This is true. That's true.
Over a period of time.
This was for fiscal year 16, which began on September 15th through September 30th, 16.
Okay, and that was over $62,000.
That's a combination, in part, that's with the utilities and with receipts that were turned in, but we could not find them. And so, I don't know, they just got packed up and put in boxes before I assumed the responsibility. But we did pull the bank account, and it will let us know where it was charged, what it was, but to call the restaurants to ask for a receipt for food, that is just impossible if you don't have a receipt number.
Okay, thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the COVID. Finally, 504 expression and company, Dr. Katherine Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We, I have, as Katrina said, there's another representative from Special Education, and since my tenure with the district, we have expanded an effort that was already in practice within Special Education Services in an effort to draw more parents in and to get more clarity around the processes for special education as well as Section 504. So in the packet that you have, on the cover page, you see a synopsis of some of those efforts from within the division specifically for special education. So for this year, it began with parent forms. Those were held beginning last week, and for all of those, we were out in the district. We held those during the evenings and schools within the community. A change that you will see as we move forward with the calendar will be that all of those have been pushed out into the community in the evening hours so that we can have as much participation from our parents as possible. Along with that, toward the end, we will still have our transition period. That will happen during the day. And another piece that we are adding for this year, for all of our information modules that are being posted for parents, we will be videoing those and have a place for them to be housed on the website. So when parents are not able to come and access that information face-to-face, they will still be able to get the information that we're sharing within the community. If you look on the second page, you will see the schedule of events that we're using throughout the course of this year. Like I've already stated, we started with that parent forum last week, and that was a great journey around the district for three or four days last week so that we could meet with parents, and they come and ask us the questions that they have about special education services. So we look forward to continuing to draw that process. Not only were parents able to ask their questions, we were able to share information with them based on questions that commonly come into the department, as well as give them an opportunity to request of us any additional classes that they would like for us to offer throughout the year. As you go through the calendar, you will see that each month has its own theme. We are partnering with our principals so that we get as many parents in as possible within the community. You see that we have them strategically plotted so that no matter what side of the district you're living on, you have easy access for those classes, as well as we will have them posted on the website, like I said earlier. The next... Uh, the next page is a continuation of that. We have this going through the month of March. And at each session, we will continue to ask parents for any additional ideas for sessions to be offered. And we got great feedback from our parents on last week. That culminating activity, uh, if you... That you see at the bottom of, uh, page three is that transition fair, which helps with our students who are preparing to leave, leave us and enter into career or college and get what opportunities are available for them. We are doing something very similar for Section five oh four. So, that is the synopsis that you have there. Uh, it is being partnered with face out of Central Office with Ms. Emily and working within the community network opportunities. So, I have Ms. Sophia Johnson, who is the, uh, department lead for that section within my division. She has been participating in those sessions herself. You'll see on the next page, we have a five oh four fact sheet that is shared at those sessions as well as answering what question-and-answer sessions that parents can engage in during that time. So, we are very committed within the division to have as much feedback and as much input from parents and to help with building and, uh, continuing to strengthen the relationships that we have within the community around these two areas. Any questions?
Is this, uh, something... Is this a new initiative for the special ed part? The part that has been done before?
No, ma'am. Like I was saying earlier, we just expanded it. So, Special Education shared these sessions prior to even to my coming to the district. It has been an effort, uh, led by Ms. Johnson and the rest of the Special Education team. One of the things that we did this year to grow that effort was to move it out into the community.
Let me just warn you. How much engage can a parent get when you have this?
This is... We had good sessions of good participation over the past years and within being housed at Bellinger Hill. And at Bellinger Hill, it was in the middle of the day, so parents could come. Uh, it was actually two sessions. One in the day, if parents wanted to come on their lunch hour. And then, the rest in the evening, if parents wanted to come after work hours. So, as we're transitioning and moving it out into the community, I will admit that we still... We are still getting the word out, and we want even more parents to come. So, we are looking forward, over the course of this year, that we will have even more numbers of parents participating. Yes, sir.
Oh, one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
As far as, and I'm all for, especially with this population of children having their parents participate. What, um, what PR are you using? I mean, how are you rolling it out?
Okay, so, we started with a mass call from Mr. Salter's office to all parents within the district. We also had our principals do a little call to their parents on the night of the session for their school to remind parents of what's happening in their local school. Uh, it was also, uh, posted on the Special Education website. And we had it in the pull-up, in the post flyer that goes out to our, uh, staff within the district and to parents. Oh, thank you. And MPS Facebook. So, we have exhausted every avenue to get the word out and make sure that we have participation. More questions?
Great job.
You've done a good job.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you did.
Thank you.
And your staff.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, the, uh, Mr. Salter, you're on. The eighteen, nineteen school calendar, Mr. Tom Salter.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Um, the calendar this year was, um, a little more exciting than in some of the years past. First of all, we were charged with adding five classroom days to our calendar. We are about educating students, and the calendar for the coming year, the one we're proposing, has one hundred and eighty classroom days. That's the same as Auburn City, Mountain Brook, and other systems in the state. But with seven more classroom days in our neighbor Elmore County with one hundred and seventy-three, uh, based on that number, or rather, based on the, uh, number of hours of structure time required by the state, you have to have at least one hundred and seventy-two days. We're also bound by a few rules. The law says we can't go to school on Veterans Day or Memorial Day. We try to give students and school-based employees a week off at Thanksgiving. Not every system does that. There's also a two-week break at Christmas and a week at spring break. The issue with spring break is that it has to be in March with at least a week of school after the break and before we begin our statewide testing in April. Also, the teacher contract with MPS is for a hundred and eighty-seven days, so we have to have some combination of classroom and professional development days to make up a hundred and eighty-seven. Last year, we had a hundred and seventy-five days of instruction with twelve PD days. Since we're increasing the number of classroom days, we had to reduce the number of PD days. But the number of workdays for teachers and other nine-month employees is unchanged. Overall, our first parent visitation day was very successful, so we've included another one in the proposed calendar for the upcoming year. We've learned a few things from this year and plan to make next year even more successful. We're also trying something new for the eighteen, nineteen calendar that we're proposing. There are two holidays, one each semester, for teachers and students. They're labeled as days of service. On these two days, October twenty-sixth and April nineteenth, students and teachers will have the day off. But, we're still finalizing the exact plans. But on both these days, we're arranging for opportunities for students to voluntarily participate in activities that can help build their resumes for college entrance and scholarships and for students to learn the satisfaction that helping others bring. Also, on that October day, we plan to have an event where colleges can provide information to students on applying, uh, scholarships, and other financial aid. In addition to the service opportunities on the April date, we're looking at the possibility of a job fair for seniors who want to go directly to work and for other students who may be looking for part-time or summer jobs. We plan to make the job... Make job shadowing also available as well for students interested in specific careers. The calendar committee met about three weeks ago. We invited a number of staff, parents, community members, and board members. It was certainly a lively discussion, but a calendar was decided on and provided to Dr. Eccleston and staff for review. A few changes were made. The draft calendar was sent to schools for a review and response. They had two weeks and came back with lots of ideas. And while the calendar I presented to you today does not allow all of their requests, it does address some of their major concerns. The adjusted calendar meets the legal requirements and our goal of a hundred and eighty classroom days. It also begins a few days earlier than the draft calendar and also finishes before Memorial Day, which the draft calendar did not do. Memorial Day is a holiday for, um, everyone in September. I'm sorry, that should be Labor Day. Uh, students get Columbus Day off, October eighth, while teachers and staff are having professional development, including data review of the first Scantron test. The first day of service holiday on Friday, October twenty-sixth, compiled with the parent visitation day on Monday, the twenty-ninth, gives students a long weekend, sort of a fall break, along with opportunities for the day of service and parent visitation day. November twelfth is the observance of Veterans Day. Schools and offices are closed by law. The next week is Thanksgiving. Students and school-based staff will be off except for principals the entire week. Central office staff and principals will work Monday and Tuesday. The winter break begins on December twenty-first for students. That's a professional development day for employees. Employees break begins on Saturday, the twenty-second, and students and staff return on Monday, January seventh. January twenty-first is Martin Luther King Junior Day, a holiday for everyone. We will be unable to, um, work President's Day in this year with this schedule. Uh, sometimes we get President's Day, and sometimes we don't. It just depends on the calendar year. Spring break is a week later this year. With students and teachers and most school-based staff out March sixteenth through the twenty-second, central office staff and principals will work Monday and Tuesday. Monday, the twenty-fifth is a day off for students. Employees will have a professional development day on that day. April is testing month. Although we do have April nineteenth as a holiday, a day of service that also happens to be Good Friday. The last day for... Excuse me. The last day for students is May twenty-third. May twenty-fourth is a PD day, the last day for teachers. Monday, the twenty-seventh is Memorial Day. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, the calendar will be placed on the website tomorrow and an opportunity to comment from the public and staff. Dr. Eccleston will review those comments and make any additional adjustments if needed based on that feedback. His final recommendation will be brought to you, um, for consideration at your December fifth appointment. Yes, ma'am?
I have one question. Um, is there traditionally one or two calendars? And I know when I was in the classroom, I remember one or the one calendar.
Several years ago, we did send multiple calendars, but basically, there were... There weren't a lot of difference between them. And a couple of years ago, it was decided we would send one calendar and just ask for feedback rather than voting on two. To be honest with you, most of the time, the difference between calendar A and calendar B were the number of days we took off for Thanksgiving or some other small little difference, like, for instance, we may have only taken three days off for Thanksgiving, had a President's Day, and a couple of other things. But ninety-nine percent of the time, uh, people, um, chose, at least their recommendation was that we had the whole week for teachers and students for Thanksgiving. Well, you know how to find you...
I know how to find.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Salter?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for doing this. And I just want to again say, I've got a lot of positive feedback from the parents' visitation day. And I'm glad that y'all put it in the calendar. I think that it'll just continue to grow.
We had a, um, a good number of parents at many of our schools. Some had more than others, but I have also gotten good feedback.
Thank you.
And Melissa, that was a date that the state actually put out there. It's like a state thing, and they, you know, did their ready to...
No, ma'am. In October is parent visitation month, but there's no requirement that we have a parent visitation day. That's something we decided to do, uh, last year for this year's calendar.
I thought it was a good idea for them and us and everybody.
Yes, ma'am, I agree.
We've been working. And that was one thing that Ms. Allen, um, really... I press for, I'm gonna be honest with you. And I just think that that's a great way also in October. If they'll come into the schools, maybe they'll realize, hey, I like to volunteer and do something and get to mentor a teacher in a more positive way instead of showing up for a bad conference. So, it's a good way to start. And maybe we can talk to the chairman and get them to encourage the employers to let these parents off.
Well, you know, I tried to bring that up, want to tip some of you back. You know, it should be a day that they go visit their children.
Right.
And they can have an opportunity at least for a second to rest and spend time with the children and get credit to be able to work. We gotta get them along with that.
Absolutely, Robert. And I think that maybe we should do some of that live talk and all that and really talk it up next year and see if we can't let more people know about that day.
We did a good... We did a good bit of that this year. I was on Channel twelve and some other stuff, so... But we can certainly always do better.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salter. Board action items, uh, first, we have, uh, that is...
I'd like to bring to your attention, uh, the board action items. The first item is the board minutes, September twenty-eighth and October tenth. I recommend for your approval at this time.
Mr. President, I think that we approved the board minutes for the September twenty-eighth and October tenth meetings.
It has been a little prompt second that we approve the board minutes September twenty-eighth and October tenth. There's any discussion? Should be hearing none. Those who are in favor, this is my show hands. It is your names. Okay. Uh, next, we have the Alabama Association of School Board Delegate selection. Now, we do have a form here that we need to fill out on the delegates. So, if you would, let's... I guess we can go around here, and we need to have one alternate. We need one to five.
You have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have, uh, hotel room?
My understanding, we do not at this point in time. My understanding, we were on a waiting list. And if the waiting list at that point in time isn't available, I think we decide we would, so we're not going. Yeah, go ahead.
Since there are six slots and there are seven of us, I'll do the honors and say I'll just step off and the rest of y'all can, uh... All right, well, then, if Miss Allison's going, then that makes it really easy. I'll be delegate. I'll be the, uh...
You alternate. You're gonna be the alternate. But then you up for, um...
Yes, you can.
You gotta go.
I'll be there, okay.
You have to go. I tell you what, to make it easy, I'll be the alternate.
No, I've already gone.
All right, Mr. President.
Let's go. All right, I put Michelle. Um... Eleanor?
Darnan.
Eleanor?
Yes.
Now, the key. Uh, then the fourth one, oh, yes. Man. Um, next, we have, uh, Dirk. And the alternate is Melissa.
No.
No, no, no.
No. What?
This is Eleanor's Eleanor.
Who's alternate?
Eleanor.
Not to him, Eleanor.
Well, we just changed placing, well, we just changed placing.
The black girl.
The black girl. Okay, got that taken care of.
The next item for your consideration will be the October twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen debate report. I recommend this item for your approval.
Mr. President, I approve the acceptance of the CEO's recommendation. On the report?
Second. Yes, we approve the prompt second that we accept the, uh, this report, uh, for October twenty-eighth. Forward to the seventeenth. There's any discussion? Those who are in favor, show your hands. Let's see if I showed hands, those who are in favor. Okay, bless your hands. Thank you.
Thank you.
The final item for your consideration will be the personnel report, certified support personnel, and a denim one support. I recommend this item for your, uh, approval.
Mr. President, may I have a request that we, uh, hold to the support personnel and veteran separately because I'm gonna have to appease myself on that support.
Okay, let's see.
Or I'm gonna have to appease myself on all of that.
I need to... We accept the CEO's recommendation on the certified personnel minutes. October twenty-fourth.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Okay, uh, we just talked about our budget, uh, and what we have, what we don't have, and all of that. I think that, and I'm looking at who it is or who is not. I just think, before we start promoting and doing all of that, we need to know if we have money and paying people we already have, and if they already do the job. Why can't we wait until we pass a budget and find out where our money is? And I think we need to hold on the support personnel minutes, um... Yeah, but that's part of it, one of these.
Yeah, two support personnel minutes, uh, again, the one.
Yeah, then the one.
Oh, again, the one.
And I don't like that, if I can do that. No, she went for a... She was... No, she didn't. Okay, I thought you said you just went low.
No, I said, if we don't... But, um, separately, I'd be happy to just appease her all.
Oh, okay.
But, I mean, whatever. I don't have the pleasure of the board at this point, you know.
Are you still referencing, uh, the denim one?
Are you talking to me?
Yes.
No, I'm referencing the, excuse me, the support personnel minutes, just the...
Regular?
Regular sheet.
Well, now, now, uh, Mr. President, if I'm in order to make simple ideas, why don't we just vote on all of them separately?
That's fine.
All of them separately?
Yeah, can we do the certified? Because we pulled too off, so you might as well just vote on them separately.
Okay, and I want to say this, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, but there's like... Because we do this, it's all together. There's one person on here, I don't know how my name, but item forty-six, because I am not going to approve that extended lead, then I have to like, I know. And it's just because of one person. I refuse to give that person another extended lead. So, I have to vote... No, I'm a whole person.
So, are you separate? What number is that?
I can't... I mean, I don't think I'm gonna do that. I...
Third time, but it's over ten, six, seven...
It doesn't matter, this is the third time.
Ten, six is past, baby.
I don't care, I'm not a president.
Ten, six is... You can't... He's crazy.
It doesn't matter, I don't want my name saying that this person...
It doesn't matter, I don't want my name saying that this person can be gone a third coming for all, and though it's been done in time.
The end time, if that end time right there, ten, six, that's past all that, ten, six, all that, man.
Well, if we vote on separately, does I have to vote for?
Mr. President.
The yard will vote as four, so, I have, if.
I'm talking for the question.
If you take the president, if we vote on this, uh.
Okay, let's just, uh, attend the place of the board, the vote in the meeting.
Question, Mr. President, we have a minute to second.
Okay.
There's a vote for certified now. Yes, some certified.
Has been moved, yeah, that's good, those who are, those who are in favor of certified, let's see if I show hands, okay, those opposed, say one, six, one. Okay, the next one, a certified, would that be the first Support Personnel, the regular Support Personnel, October twenty-fourth, twenty-seventeenth? Those who are in favor, let's see if I show that.
Motion.
Okay, yeah, 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 motion. Okay, come on.
Make a motion that we approve the Personnel Report, or Support Personnel.
I said me.
Has been moved promptly second that we, uh, we support, I mean, that Support, the Support Personnel Minutes for October twenty-fourth, twenty-seventeenth, those who are in favor, let's see if I show that.
I have to abstain from this.
Okay, you abstain, so that's six, one intention. Uh, thirdly, let's do the, oh, sorry, you, make a presentation.
Oh, I, well, I move that we approve the Addendum One Support, second. Who said that, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Okay, it has been moved promptly second that we approve the Support Personnel Minutes, Addendum One, those, is there any discussion?
Uh, my, my discussion is still the same, we, we've sat here two, two and a half hours discussing, discussing the budget, and yet, we're, we're promoting people, uh, and we don't even know whether we have the money to pay what we are already paying, I just, it's just, to me, to sit here and do this is good, um.
Ms. Farms, but I think it says it's the same, same thing, it's, it's no change.
It's not, though.
Uh, would if we just pull and bring it back?
Yeah.
Would do that.
Well, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, let's, let's just, uh, let's make a motion, call, if you would, make a motion, call it, bring it back, uh, straight time.
President, I move that we withdraw this Addendum One until we get more information.
You got more than one on that, Addendum One.
Say what?
Just call the number, please.
I don't have to call the number.
She pulled one.
Okay, I will, what if the person?
Okay, okay.
We can break up.
Okay.
Out of the sample.
Okay, you say, it has been moved promptly second that we, uh, for the Addendum Two, October twenty-fourth, twenty-seventeenth, is there any discussion?
I think, could we just make sure that we get it fixed, and perhaps have it to the, on Tuesday, Thursday?
That's, that was my motion, uh.
I'm sorry, Mary.
What, anything?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Any other discussion?
No.
Those who are in favor, let's see my show hands, all opposed, say no, opposed, unanimous. Okay, the next item, uh, on the agenda, we have here, the, uh, Schedule to Public Comments, Rules and Procedures of Participation in the Board Meetings. Requests must be made in advance and arranged in superintendent's office by four thirty on the Tuesday preceding the meeting day. This must have specified the nature of the business to be taken up with the board in the name of the person who will address the board to be added to their agenda. Communication must be respectful, discussing specifics to the employee matters will not be allowed. Individuals who have concerns that are inappropriate to be solved in this venue are welcome to seek a problem solving meeting with the superintendent. Committing feedback by the board may not be provided, how well, you may be contacted or followed by superintendent on desert need. Public comments may not exceed five minutes, the board chair has full authority to terminate remarks of any person who comments contain personal attacks, as either time limit or otherwise inappropriate. The speaker may be considered disruptive, who contends to speak when their time is ended, when asked to stop speaking by the board chair or is otherwise inappropriate. If a person fails to comply when asked to terminate comments, he or she will be escorted to their seat out of the auditorium and/or of M P S property, depending on the level of disruption. First person we have, one citizen comments, Ms. Katie Brown, uh, children. Ms. Katie Brown, uh, children.
I, uh, came upon you to speak on something else, uh, that was placed in the building for a red town, about the hiring of, of teachers without certification, but I haven't read that, so I won't talk about what I heard tonight. Um, number one, I wanted to talk about the fact that I heard you say, I think, I don't wanna go home with the wrong interpretation, that you have students from Pat Road in the magnet program, steel.
That's true.
While we have students that are already a public student, that wouldn't qualify for being in the magnet program, if it wasn't for the over, them becoming overcrowded in the magnet program. So we're serving students outside of the county, rather than serving the students who are inside the county. And as I was, I was, I didn't talk to the parent, I need to be able to explain what it is that I heard. So, I'll be getting in touch with somebody, and I'll be getting correct information, because if you are doing that, I can see the state intervening. Uh, another thing that I heard, um, the students were asking, and the teachers were asking, and, and, and niggas were around, low in the school, the teachers were asking, why don't you have consequences for these teachers who stay out of school all the time? They never, they, they, they just take off, and the students are left to go from one teacher class to the other. This is not serving the children, and when I stand and speak, I'm speaking for our young people because we are losing them. And you've got to come up with something, now, when I was in the school system, you put like marks on teachers' records, that were not complying according to the way that a teacher was supposed to perform. We need to go back to that, and it shouldn't be allowed, when you have twenty teachers absent in one day, and a teacher who's constantly, and I'm not naming the teacher, but, but they have to place that in my door also. The next thing I wanted to say, because I, I did, I, after teaching and after talking to students, I didn't get angry when you didn't let me ask my question. Now, if they allow the public to ask questions when they wanted to ask questions, in the beginning, you possibly wouldn't be on the state supervision now. Listen to the public, listen to the parents, listen to them, when you dealt with the Georgia and Washington situation, I was wondering where were you gonna throw those five hundred and some students, because we're already overcrowded. We're already thirty-nine, thirty-eight, or forty students in the classroom, so what are you gonna do to those students? Think before you make a decision, please, help us out in the community, so that we will understand what is happening, so that we can talk to the students. Because I, I am sick of seeing students shooting each other, or not coming to school, or walking the streets. Help us out in the community, to deal with our children, because we are losing them. Okay, I wanted to also say something about, um, the place over at Park Cross, it's been there since December, the new building, why don't you all put some chairs in it so that the teachers can use it, and not have overcrowding in the classrooms that are in the original building? It's been there since December that I've seen it. What, what can we do, what do we need to do? Put those different boards, like city council, or county commission, or whoever, what can they do to help you? Place chairs in that building that we spent all that money on. Here, officer, these are things that were presented to me, and I am presenting to you, so that I may rest, and then you have the problem of resolving these situations. I thank you, and my time will speak.
Next person on the agenda to public comment is Lisa Hill, filled in text votes and air communication barriers.
It's been going on too long, our kids are not all receiving the same education. I have a child that has been to Blunt Elementary, and I, and my child now is going to T S Morris. I can assure you, the education that she is receiving is not the same. First of all, I wanna talk about the textbooks, I begged for a textbook for about nine weeks, and this is what I was sent home, in this condition. Didn't even have the decency to take it up. I begged for a syllabus, so that I could be helping my child when she come home, so that I can be on the same page the teacher is on, when she's teaching. Rather than getting resolution, I got attitude, conflict, I got a principal that is very defiant, unhelpful, and to me, it's important that the principal set the example for the teachers, because if you don't have a principal that's respectable to the students and the parents, the teachers are not gonna be respected. She cuts me off, she has me on speakerphone, they laughing in the background while I'm discussing important issues about my child's education. The computer class that is held at T S Morris includes the children playing games, games. When she went to one, they learned to touch, they read stories, they did educational things, they were not just sitting at the computer playing games, we need to get it home. Someone has to be there responsible. I hear a lot of talk about the budget, so, where the budget going? Definitely not on the students that I'm gonna learn. I simply asked, the reason I'm here today is because I simply asked for a syllabus. I got some type of thick booklet that the principal couldn't even explain to me what it was, I tried to read it, I consider myself pretty educated to read, basic things, and when I asked her about the booklet, she said that I need to speak with an expert at the Board of Education. I made three phone calls, I was transferred about four or five times, and she was supposed to call me back today, hadn't heard her from her, I know I'm not supposed to call her names, so I won't do that, but I'll call her back tomorrow, to explain to me the booklet that's gonna help me understand the curriculum my coordinator is supposed to be taking. They're teaching subjects, and they're on the subjects for three to four weeks, I do understand some subjects are lengthy, and it takes some time to complete, to get a better understanding of them, but not teaching the same thing three to four weeks, before you know it, the school term's gonna be over, and it's only one thing they taught. Okay, textbooks, this textbook here, is another book I got, it's two thousand seventeen, this book is two thousand five, two thousand five. Budget, we know that that sixty-two thousand dollars is not going here. Communication, I kinda touched on that already, with just saying how I'm disrespected by the principal, when I call for help, I'm laughed at, when I go into the school, their goal is to make me feel unwelcome, um, just strange things happen, no one wants to ask me questions. She, she's even told me, she don't have to ask my question, she directs me to other people, she's even invited me to speak with her supervisor. When I was working, I never wanted anyone to speak to my supervisor, ever, that's a bad thing. And we try to resolve things at the basic level, is what I was told, when I did call my, my public school, but I'm forwarded or directed to people, I'm told to file complaints and grievance, I, why do I need to do that when I'm just asking basic, simple questions? Only thing I want is a syllabus, only thing I wanna know is what she's being taught, she's away for eight hours of the day, for, for nothing? You can't tell me what you're teaching, you get an attitude as though I have no reason to ask what my child is learning, that's not right. And I, I, I looked at a lot of the board meetings that you all had on YouTube, and a lot of the people come up and they said, no one has contacted me, no one has gotten back to me. Who's responsible, and who's gonna be held accountable for these students?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Hill, I'm certain this superintendent, this chief academic officer's heard you, he's taken confirmation, and he worked, and he made, and he addressed your concerns.
Right.
Thank you. Uh, the next individual is Karen Jones, Constitutional Rights Resource, and Law and Behavior. Not here, okay, there are no citizens come in, so at this time, we, our next meeting will be Thursday, October twenty-sixth, we'll be, um, but here is. Mr. President.
Uh, there was, uh, uh, this email that came from Dr. Exton, and it stated that, uh, you two had agreed this morning to request your bail bill.
We had had accomplished, well.
But, I can't finish.
Yeah, go ahead, I, I know where you're going.
Uh, if you like.
Yeah, I know.
Community Board constantly November the sixth and seventh, the seventh is the thirtieth, thirtieth day that we have to make a decision to.
Really?
Yes, sir, I agree on that.
Well, the thing.
Uh, the seventh is the deadline for us to either pull back from this sale or go forth with the sale, so why would you have a meeting on the seventh?
Well, I thought we were having a meeting next week initially, he was coming up with another date, but surely, we can't wait till the seventh. Uh, my suggestion was for, um, matter of fact, I was under the impression, I spoke to Mr. Dotson, I was under the impression that we'll be finished with the facility study by Thursday this week, I tried to set it up for next week, Monday, and that's what I told you, Monday, and Tuesday, and Thursday, next week. Well, my understanding, Dr. Exton states that it'll be by the midweek of next week, will be somewhere around first, so, i- if we get it in by first, we can have the meeting, I'm saying that second, we just do one, and, uh, come back to be on the third, we don't need to wait until the, State law said we have to have a tenant?
Our own policies, that's it, we have public here, it's gonna be a bunch of closed students, or whatever.
Okay.
So, we, we talk about following our policy, then some things we're gonna follow policy, other things we don't.
Okay.
So that is a policy that I gave all, we were happy about tenants, uh, meetings, uh, media releases, and ability to seek all these, so you have all those topics I gave off.
Why don't we do this, why don't we do this, uh, if it's a board, right, uh, November the first, which is next Wednesday, they say that the facilities should be ready and completed by then, I know the sort of information on that. So, if it's completed, the first of November, which is next Wednesday, could we have a meeting next Wednesday, next Thursday, and vote next Friday, which will be Thursday?
What if we did that on Thursday? Could we do the meeting on the Thursday and the Friday, and then follow up with the vote, because?
Have a meeting on Thursday, please say, have a meeting on the, what about that Wednesday, it's supposed to be delayed?
Well, I'm just saying, I, I take a Bible study on Wednesday nights, so, I mean, I appreciate, I'm alive, oh, do you?
Oh, do you?
Is that a pleasure, fun to have the meeting on Thursday, Friday, and come back Monday for the vote?
Well, Eleanor's...
Okay, what about that, um... The community meetings is probably about six o'clock, six thirty, I would think. You give everybody up to, y'all, for it, get ready to go to the meeting. We're talking about community meetings here.
Well, I'm...
What about this, did we say the second?
No, you need to be here because...
The one is first.
So we need to accommodate...
The second, and what, the third?
We need to accommodate Melissa's and rest her student.
What's, right, what'd you say?
We need your board Wednesday.
Uh, what, what, what Wednesday, we say Thursday?
Well, Thursday, he can't be here Friday, can't we do Monday, Tuesday, something like that?
Well, that'll carry us back to, oh, we could have the community forums without having the, you know, we could have the community forums, I don't see why we can't have them next Monday the thirtieth, and then, um, uh, uh, uh... I mean, I'm, I'm saying Monday the thirtieth would be said initially, and then the second, which would be that Thursday. What would be the problem with Monday, the thirtieth? You got, today is Wednesday, today is Wednesday. Oh, yeah, tomorrow's Wednesday. They have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then no Monday, they would have gotten that plate. So we could have it Monday, could we have it Monday evening, and then turn around Thursday evening maybe? And we'd be ready. How about that? That's feel back to what I said. Everybody agreed with that? Does everyone agree with that? Okay, what time on Monday, six thirty or six?
Six.
Six o'clock Monday and six o'clock, you got that, Doc? Six o'clock Monday, which is the thirtieth, and the second, which will be the Thursday. Location, Monday will be, do you want to do Georgia Washington Monday? You want to do the P S C Monday? One will be G W, and one will be here. Which one will be here?
We all decide.
Which one? First one at G W, so we'll set, uh, the thirtieth for G W, and the twenty-sixth, I mean, the second for the P S C, which is here. At the same time, could we say six o'clock? Both meetings start at the same time, six o'clock. Everybody in agreement? All right, great, good stuff. Um, at this time, our next regular meeting will be October twenty-sixth, twenty-seventeen. We'll have a, uh, budget hearing at twelve P M Central Office. Uh, Thursday, October twenty-sixth, twenty-seventeen, a meeting following the budget hearing, we'll have a special call meeting at the Central Office. Next meeting there will be October twenty-sixth, which will be our work session also. And the next meeting after that will be November the fourteenth, twenty-seventeen. Our regular board meeting will be at Carver High School. Thank you, y'all, have a blessed evening.